Approving a conditional use permit. Sarah, you're coming up.
Evening, Council. Sorry.
Time's up, Sarah.
So this evening, I'll be presenting the Doyle Street Lofts project to you. There is a materials board that I just sent on the dais, in case you're interested in that. And the applicant architect, Alex Bergtrou, also has a presentation to make for you and some material board, additional boards, as you can see. So the site location for this project is 5532 Doyle Street. It's directly south of iconic Doyle Project, which is right here. So the project overview, the project is for demolishing two existing residential units and replacing them with two new residential units. The reason I'm here before you tonight is because any time a residential structure is demolished, whether it's replaced or not, it needs to come to City Council. The required findings include conditional use permit, development bonus, demolition, design review, and variance. So here is the existing structures. There's two existing units. One is a one-bedroom. The other one is a very small two-bedroom. The total square footage is about 1,400 square feet for both units. Here's some more photos relating to the rear and side of the property. So when this went to Planning Commission for vote on December 11th, there were four ayes for recommendation, one no with reservations regarding the design review finding of active use. One member was recused and one had an excused absence. The Planning Commission approved or recommended the project to you, rather, with the following requested changes: to add details to the windows on the south elevation of the rear built, pardon me, I'm going to try that again, to add details to the windows on the south elevation of the rear building that faces the parking lot, and to add more plants to the landscaping in the front. Both of those comments have been addressed, and those changes are reflected in the application materials that you've received and in this presentation. So here are the proposed renderings. Here where my cursor is, is the front of the property, first unit, it's one-bedroom. And this is a view from the back of the property, looking at the second unit. And here is a side view from the south side of the property, which would be from the parking lot. However, there is a fence with landscaping against it all along the length of the property. The proposed site plan, pardon me, places the cars parking between the two buildings and at the rear of the parking. That's consistent with the design review findings that are required, and we'll discuss those later. Also, right here, you can see the architectural details around the windows that the Planning Commission discussed with the applicant. The proposed ground floor unit, both units have the primary living area and kitchens on the first floor and are, whoa, sorry about that. And the second floor is where the bedrooms are located. So in the front unit, that would be one bedroom, and the rear, that would be two bedrooms. Oh, my apologies. There we go. So here are the elevations for the front unit, which is highlighted here. This is a view from the east, so the back of the unit. This is from the front with the fence in front of it, and this is what the front from the street would look like without the fence. In the rear unit, this is what faces the front unit between the buildings. Oh, no, I apologize. That's this one here. The east elevation here, so the back of it that opens up to the rear yard, and here it is highlighted in red. The proposed landscaping changes just added more vegetation to the front area, and they're, the project meets the requirements for both the front yard and the rear yard. So for zoning analysis, FAR, the maximum FAR, so floor area ratio, is .5. The property is approximately 3,000 square feet, which only provides 1,500 square feet of living area. The maximum building height is 30 feet, and the proposed project has a 20 feet six inches height, which is about the same as the wall that's on the north side of the property. The dwelling units per acre, the maximum with a bonus, is two dwelling units. However, because there's removal of units, I'll talk about that later, there's also requirement to have two units. The off-street parking that's required is three spaces, and the applicant is proposing three spaces. And all the setbacks are met, except for the north side of the property, because there's a 20-foot wall along the entire length of the property, and having a building with three feet of separation from that would essentially create a canyon and not serve the purpose of providing light and air to both property owners and users. And as I mentioned before, for the residential density, replacing existing unit requires the City Council approval, and the applicant is replacing both units as required in the code. So the conditional use permit findings, the proposed use is consistent with the general plan, and listed below are several goals and policies from the land use section. So it provides a diverse mix of housing types. It's preservation of residential neighborhood and the character of the Doyle Street neighborhood. The land uses are consistent with the land use diagram in the general plan, is consistent with the maximum building heights and floor area ratios of the general plan. The second conditional use permit finding is the characteristics and design of the proposed use are compatible with the neighborhood, meeting all of the design requirements in height setbacks, except for the one variance that's being requested, and proposed use is consistent with the neighborhood characteristics as required by the planning regulations. Thirdly, the proposed use is compatible with utilities and emergency response systems. This will not be adding any additional burden to those systems. Fourth, the proposed use contributes to the general well-being of the community, and so the proposed dwelling units of this location will provide new high-quality residential units and home ownership opportunities in an existing residential neighborhood. And fifth, the proposed use complies with the planning regulations overall. For the development bonus findings, to provide the two units, the proposed project is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. It's replacing two existing dwelling units of approximately the same size with slightly higher square footage that falls within the FAR requirements. The proposed project minimizes the appearance of driveway and parking areas. That's correct. It provides parking between the two units and at the rear of the property. For demolition findings, the applicant will provide at least the same number of dwelling units as the demolished structure, which she is doing. And the replacement structures feature design quality that is least as high as the structures to be demolished, and the design is compatible with the neighborhood. The applicant has put a great effort into the design of these structures, and he'll be speaking with you about that. The elimination of the residential structures will not be material detrimental to the housing needs or public interest of affected neighborhoods. So as I mentioned, the demolished units are being replaced and providing the same number of bedrooms as the existing units with slightly more square footage. For major design review findings, we're getting through it. The design of the project is consistent with the general plan. Below are urban design guidelines, goals, and policies that it's consistent with: diversity of building types and scales, preservation of existing small-scale residential quality of older neighborhoods, infill residential, avoiding continuous rows of garages, and providing activation at the lot frontage and minimizing visible off-street parking. The design of the project conforms to the Emeryville Design Guidelines, and some of those items are using permeable paving and materials for the driveway pathways and surface parking areas, considering edge conditions and transition areas during site design that ensure compatibility. So the variance is consistent with that. And it's stepping down from the north, which would have the higher iconic Doyle complex to the parking lot to the south of it. The waste containers are screened. There's a location directly between both residential units for the waste, so that would be your trash compost recycling, and once again, reducing the visual impact, visual and physical impact of parking. Thirdly, the project is of a high design quality that is compatible with and will not adversely affect the surrounding area. So staff and the Planning Commission overall felt that that was correct. For the setback variance, the proposal for which the variance is sought is consistent with the general plan. Once again, we have some restated general plan guidelines here. And the proposal for which the variance is sought is consistent with the general plan, that's the same, my apologies. Strict application of the planning regulations would deprive the property owner of privileges enjoyed by owners of other properties in the same zoning district. The existence of a 20-plus-foot tall wall along the exact border of the property is pretty atypical. That's not a standard condition, so this is a situation that staff feels is appropriate to have a variance. And a variance is necessary for the preservation of property rights and would not constitute a special privilege. And so a variance is necessary for the preservation enjoyment of substantial property rights that are possessed by other conforming properties that are not bordered by a wall over 20 feet in height. So saying that a property that did not have this challenge, they wouldn't have any extra benefit than these folks. And granting the variance would not be materially detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. So it is against a 20-foot wall, so it would not be breaking the light or view from a solid wall. And the conditions upon which are unique, and it is atypical, as we discussed. So staff does recommend approval for this, and if you have any questions, I'm certainly available, as is the applicant who would like to present.
Mayor Atkin, I have a question.
Yeah.
About the variance and about, what is the composition of that wall on the north side, 20-foot high?
Yeah.
What's it made out of?
It's a solid, what's the, it's concrete, it's a solid concrete wall.
And what did the fire department have to say about putting that so close to the wall?
So both fire and building met multiple times with the applicant, and there, we wouldn't bring anything to the Planning Commission that we felt could not be built, and they were pleased with the way this was being dealt with.
Fire doesn't see any problems with this at all?
I'm assuming George.
Yes.
Has a lot to do with that.
Both George and Guyan reviewed this project.
Okay.
It's not uncommon.
Yeah, it requires different building materials. Yeah.
I have a question.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Is the, on the south side of the driveway, next to the fence?
Yes.
Is that a planting strip for potential future vertical cypress trees, bamboo, something?
I'm trying to go back, I apologize to that.
In other words, is it, is that what that is?
So there's existing plantings along there. So here's, I'm sorry, that keeps happening. So here's a photo of existing conditions from the parking lot, and that fence is to remain with those plantings on it. And there's not a whole lot of space between that fence and the driveway.
So is the?
So it could have other plantings there in the future, but not to the degree proposed that you're asking about right now.
Well, it looks like it's a couple of feet wide, maybe at the back, and three feet at the front. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I believe so.
It goes from three to five feet, and it's actually, the property line is where we're showing it on the first line between the driveway and the green. And so that's not really our property. It's just that the fence has been built off the property, and so we're just maintaining it as a green strip. And we'd rather not be putting in cypresses or something like that there, because it would block the solar access to the houses, not only these that we're proposing, but also if they got tall enough, it would affect the other neighbors. And we're just leaving it as green. You know, it's, right now, it's an existing eight-foot-high fence, completely covered in ivy, and we thought it was fine. Be actually a nice place for some vegetable gardening, herb gardening, for the people who live there.
Any other questions, Ruth, Council? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open for public comment.
I believe the applicant wanted to make a presentation as well.
Thank you. Jump the gun here.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Alex Bergtrou. I'm the owner of the property, and I'm also an architect, and we've had our office, Studio Bergtrou Architects, at the corner of 55th and Doyle, just 100 feet down the street, for the last 17 years. We've owned this property for about 10 years, and we are extremely affectionate to Doyle Street. It's, when I was looking for a place to have an office, I went to Doyle Street to look for a place, and I was lucky enough to find a place to rent there, and we've been there for 17 years. So when the opportunity came to buy this property, we took it, and we, because the way the economy is at this very moment, this very moment, we think we can actually manage to pull this off, to actually build this in this window, and we're excited about doing something that will be an improvement on this, on this site. The existing houses there, they're actually, I think if you took an X-ray of the houses, you'd find termites holding each other, each other's hands. And it's really, it's, it's come a time where they are needed to be replaced, and so we're replacing with two units. The existing houses that are on the site are both 713 and 714 square feet each, and we have shifted the mix on that to be one that's roughly 1,000 square feet and one that's roughly 500 square feet. And the reason for doing that is that we realized that we could actually, there's been discussion about family-friendly housing. We actually think that this is an extremely interesting combination of houses on the same site, that it gives a diversity within this one site. And this is an incredibly narrow site, but it gives us some diversity that we could have something where a family could live in the back, they could then rent out the front unit, or they could have an in-law live in that unit, or they could have a home office space in the front, and it gives so many more opportunities than if it was just one single unit on that site. And so we're very, very excited about what we're proposing here from a functional programming point of view. And then we're really excited about what we're doing with, I think we're just excited with what we're trying to do design-wise, because we've been able to save the avocado tree that's been there. I fought to have that avocado tree saved many years ago when the icon was built, and I felt it's behooved of me to save this thing as part of our development. And we also feel that it'll have some really nice eyes on the street, because creating this lantern on the front building is going to create a nice sense of light at night to the street, which we don't have right now. The way it is right now, between this very closed-in fence that's there on the street and the porch, which is a very dark porch on that front house, you really have no idea of what's going on inside, and this, we feel, is going to give this nice lantern effect. So we hope that you'll approve it. Can answer any questions you have. We've tried to be as green as possible with the building, and we think also with the planting, we've gone by all the Wookles recommendations and have picked plants that are only by that. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, I'll open the public hearing for public comment.
First of all, I know the architect, I've met him. He's a nice guy. He, he opened up his architectural office for Councilwoman Jennifer West, running for City Council, and so I always have appreciated that, and so he's my kind of guy. However, I have a problem with the project. The biggest, biggest problem is, back in the '90s, we had a lot of, we had the beginning of a new program of developers coming in, tearing down buildings, especially in the North Emeryville Residential Neighborhood, tearing down existing homes, older homes, and putting in new, new homes. Sometimes, you know, increasing the density. And the people got really upset about that. And so written into our new general plan, there was provisions to stop that in the two older residential neighborhoods in the city, the Triangle Neighborhood and then, of course, the North Emeryville Residential Neighborhood. And those two neighborhoods are identified in the general plan very clearly as what are called zones of stability, which means that we're not going to be tearing down the older houses. And so this sort of turns that on its ear. So we need to, are we just going to abandon the concept of zones of stability? Don't think we should do that. I mean, the general plan says, don't do that. To say that this preserves the older neighborhood, to tear down, you know, sort of a lovely old Craftsman that can be remodeled or rehabilitated, that sort of makes a mockery of the words preserving an older neighborhood. And in addition, Charlie finds that this is a, provides diverse housing type. In fact, no, what it does is the design, you know, even though it might be nice, it's a flat roof, modernist structure, which is everywhere in Emeryville now, and what we're losing are the older houses, especially the Craftsman-type houses. So this is not a diverse housing. This is adding to the, the stock of housing that we have right now, which is, you know, stucco and glass and flat roof and modern. So it doesn't contribute to the diversity of housing, it takes away from it. And then addition, the variance I have a problem with, because there's a, there's a wall there, yes, but the wall is there. It's sort of a tautology, where the city says yes to building this condo development several years back, and so now there's a condition now that, so we have to provide a variance for this project. So it's sort of, you're complaining about the weather, like, but you're the one making the weather. So it's, it's sort of a cynical way to allow for variances to be granted. So I don't think that that's a good enough reason for a variance. Talking about enjoying the property is going to be harmed without this variance is sort of, the existing property owner is there enjoying the property, and so I think that makes a mockery of that.
That's it.
I think we should pay attention to zones of stability. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rich Ambrose Stil, archaeologist and historian. I don't get a sense of what those buildings to be demolished look like. I don't know how old they are. It sounds like one of them is a Craftsman. I happen to like Craftsman houses. But has there been a historical evaluation of the two structures threatened by demolition? And should I maybe could ask yourselves, do we have to knock down all the old houses just for bigger houses and profit-oriented? Anyway, I'm a big fan of keeping old neighborhoods old, old-looking and really old. So anyway, I don't know the answer in terms of how old the two structures are. I couldn't tell from the photos. Anyway, I'm just asking the question. Thank you.
Judy.
Hi, Judy Timmel. I live two lots over from this project, to the south. And as far as I know, our residents that live in the cohousing initially were concerned about eyes on the street, but seeing the, the large windows and the two-story large windows that are on Doyle Street, we, I think, have been convinced that this would be a positive addition in that sense. There was a carjacking right in front of that property just last year, and so we were concerned about, about the eyes on the street aspect, and I think this really does address from that perspective. There are no other single-family dwellings on our block, so the two that are existing, I don't find that they really fit in with the rest of the street anyway. So yes, I'm generally in favor of maintaining single-family dwellings and existing housing stock. I think they're in very poor condition, and that I think this, this design really does make a positive addition to our street, although I'm speaking for myself, of course. I wish maybe Alex might reconsider the stucco. I'm really bored with stucco, and there's a lot of brick on our street. I think it would be lovely to have some brick, brick accents. Anyway, thank you.
Any other public comments? Public comments in the public hearing are now closed. Council discussion?
Mayor Atkin, I happen to agree with Judy Timmel. I think this will be an improvement on the street. Those two houses that are there, they don't look like Craftsmans to me, and I've been inside them, and they are crumbling. I think the, I think you're right, the, the bugs are holding the house up. I think it's, especially I like the idea that the cohousing people focused on the lantern effects, where you'd have more light in that area, it's a dark area, and you need more, right now, you walk by and you don't know who's in behind that, that, that place. I think it's a, a nice design, and I like the idea that we are going to keep the fence with the beautiful vines on it. That'll go a long way. And you swear you're going to keep the avocado tree. That is a superb tree. So I'm very much in favor of this project, and I hope we move ahead with it.
Any other council comments?
I'd like to say that I think it really, I love the design, and I think the social aspects are marvelous to divide the two units that way. I think in the long run, will make a better community. So I, I'm impressed with the.
That emotion, Scott?
That's emotion.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to comment that I appreciate that we live in a community where we do try to maintain and preserve architecturally significant structures. That said, I think our, our staff and Planning Commission would have told us if they deemed these buildings to be architecturally significant, and I'm also satisfied with this plan.
I have a comment, Ruth.
Yeah.
So I initially asked a couple of questions about the staff report, and I just want to share that here. I too am supportive of, of the plan, but I just want to put these clarifying questions out there, because I, I just want to shift our thinking a little bit. Here on page 237, one of the findings that we have to make, and talking about the proposed use being consistent with the general plan, "A mix of housing types, a diversity of housing types to accommodate a variety of household sizes and incomes. The proposed development maintains the existing unit mix while providing home ownership opportunities." When I looked at that, I thought, why wouldn't we favor or want, say, a three-bedroom unit on this site? Because we know that in town, we don't have a lot of three-bedroom units. And of course, this was not, this is not what's written down in, in the general plan, right? It talks about maintaining the unit mix. But I'd like staff, and I'd like the council, maybe to rethink this, right? That if, what we're looking for is just the replacement of the existing unit mix, we are going to consistently have, right, that 7% of three-bedrooms in Emeryville. And, you know, all of that burden can't fall on, on one project, but I think that it's something that I would like to talk about as a council. That said, I'm also supportive of the project.
Well, I'll comment, and, and I guess everything is in the eye of the beholder. I do have some concerns that these just look too boxy, and they're not very interesting to me, but I'm just one person. I also am very tired of flat roofs in, in Emeryville, and I would prefer a gabled roof. So I don't really like how these look. And then, secondly, there's a parking spot underneath the building, so that creates a soft story. And I'm just, in earthquake country, I'm just, don't think that that makes a lot of sense to have a soft story. And I guess I join, I didn't hear Commissioner Moss's comments about design review, but perhaps I echo some of what he found issue with. So I'm not enamored of the design, but I understand that the existing structures are very depreciated and in bad shape. So I'm intrigued with your idea to actually create a larger unit.
Mayor Atkin?
Yeah.
Could I just comment on your comment on the soft story issue?
Yeah.
I'm not an engineer, so, you know, I'm just sort of talking off the top of my head here. But my understanding is, these buildings will be designed to meet current seismic safety standards, and they would not be subject to the same kind of soft story collapse issues that you see with older buildings in an earthquake. So just because it looks like that doesn't mean that it would be soft story, quote-unquote, in the structural sense.
I thought that, by definition, what I'm looking at is a soft story.
No, as the chief building official explained in the informational report that you received, I think it was at your last meeting, you can't tell a soft story building by looking at it. at it. He's gone around the city and done a windshield survey and identified, I think he said, seven buildings that could potentially be soft-story, but the only way he can know is to have a structural engineer actually analyze the building. And a new building would never be built to that, you know, to the definition of soft-story.
Ball question? Well, there was a motion, who seconded it?
I did. Scott and Nora.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Asher.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Council, Vice Mayor Davis.
Aye.
And Mayor Atkin.
I'll approve it, but with my reservations so noted. So thank you. This takes us to...